Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order and announce that this meeting is being recorded, and is anyone else recording? Seeing none, I'd ask us to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, as you know, this is our reorganization meeting. Want to welcome Mrs. McCulloughs to the school committee, joining a great supportive group. So, I'll open by taking nominations for chairperson.
I'll make a nomination that Judge Scobie continue to be our chairperson.
Is there a second? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. And I will now turn the meeting back over to Mr. Scobie.
That was great.
Now, you got your big chair.
All right. My big boy chair.
Yeah.
Okay. And now, we'll be seeking a vice chair. So, I would entertain nomination for a vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Jesse Arington.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Do we have any discussion? Was there any other interest in vice chair?
Yeah, I'd do it. But that's fine.
Any further discussion? We have a second.
It's okay.
All in favor?
Oh, wait. Are we wait...
All in favor of Jesse?
Yeah, I had a second, correct?
Okay.
Meg, you were a second? All in favor? Ms. Arington, are you willing to pick your position as chair?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. All right. And we will continue on. We already had our brief executive session before I arrived. So, we have some special recognitions this evening.
We do, Mr. Chair. The first, I just wanted to bring to your attention, recently, Megan Corey received the Daughters of the American Revolution Award. She is a member of the Class of 18, and Mrs. Sampson attended with her, and notes that Megan's phenomenal essay was selected and read during the awards ceremony on April 30th. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and join us in congratulating Megan on doing a great job.
Congratulations. And that is the only special recognition that we have this evening?
It is.
Okay. Sorry. Let me just gather myself here. We now move on to the superintendent's memo? No? Oh. Citizens comments. Do we have any citizens to comment? Seeing none, we now move on to the student representatives' report. Sorry, I'm still in baseball mode.
So, to start off, a couple of weeks ago, we had kindness weeks. We had a little spirit week, and then on Friday, we had an AHS alum come and speak to us about autism awareness, and how it affected his life, and how AHS really helped him to prepare for his future, and how he was very grateful for the people he met along the way. It was a really important topic to hear about, and we're all... And he's such a great speaker. We were all really grateful that we got to hear him speak. With that, spring sports are also doing very well. Playoffs are coming up, and all the teams are doing well. And then tomorrow night is senior sports awards night at 6:00 in auditorium. And with that, the senior year is coming to an end for the class of 2018. Monday is our last day of classes, Tuesday, Wednesday, our finals, and then we'll have all of our trips, and then graduation is June 8th. So, we're all very anxious for those experiences, and we're excited for what's next to come.
Excellent.
And just a few other things that have been going on. The AP exam started last week and are closing out this Friday, and last Thursday was the Festival of the Arts, which had students from the high school all the way down to the elementary school, performing various acts of music, or phys ed, or any of, like, the arts.
Great. Thank you for that. This young lady looks very familiar down here. I'm looking at you, Isabel.
We've missed you.
Oh, I've missed you, too.
Welcome back. I would now seek approval of the minutes of May 1st and May 2nd.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of May 1st and May 2nd.
Do I have... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. We now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, first up, we have Mr. Fahey here with us, our fantastic director of facilities, who's here to give us his biannual update on buildings and grounds. So, with your approval, I'll turn it over to Mr. Fahey.
Thank you, Dr. Benau. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Here is our buildings and grounds report. Packard Truck School. You know, we all have a brand-new roof put up there last year, and believe it or not, it takes about 10 months to finally go through all the closeout documents, so on and so forth, and we're pretty much at that stage right now. So, happy to report, no leaks, which is important. Two, we got new equipment up there. We have HVAC upgraders up there. We have gas actually in two of the rooftop units up there now, and that's all part of the MSBA project. So, we've done an awful lot with that, so we're excited. Also, for the exterior of the building, what we've done in the springtime is we just recently replaced the outdoor fence that... Inside the property line, in the tree line, we had an old beat-up fence that was on the ground, thrown down there. So, it's served a couple of purposes. At one time, obviously, it kept the animals and kept the people from coming into the schools. But over the years, it's just kind of fell down. Nobody knew it was even falling down. So, concerned really about someone getting in there, getting caught up with the old fence. So, we had it removed, and we put... This time, we put it on the outside of the tree line, to kind of dress up the back of Packard Truck, and it kind of corrals the kids to keep them inside the playground area instead of going through the woods and getting some poison ivy. So, we thought that was a wise investment. So, also, what we did is we placed a basketball hoop. We eliminated it. This goes back to when Dr. Lozé was the principal up there. We put a couple of basketball hoops in there so they can actually play games. So, there's no need for this third one that was kind of like beat up and old. So, we eliminated it, add a couple more parking spaces. So, it should help up the early morning drop-off and the afternoon pickup, so... And obviously, we did a little curb appeal. We spread some wood chips down there for our Memorial Day presentation, so kind of spruced it up a little bit. Over at Brenmore, we pretty much did the same thing, a little curb appeal. In the early spring, we trimmed up all the trees, all those pine trees that run along the side of Brenmore in the playground. Two reasons. One, to give it a little bit more sunlight. Hopefully, we can grow a little bit of something underneath there, because we get those roots that come up, and the concern is these little kids, you know, tripping over the roots, and so we thought it'd be good to trim those up and dress it up a little bit. Inside the building, we pretty much had a pretty good season. Last year, we installed three new rooftops, so we continued with the upgrade for the rooftops. We did a couple of building controls. We... In December, we replaced all the steam traps, if you remember. So, other than that, Brenmore seemed like it was in pretty good shape. Going down to the intermediate school, same thing, curb appeal just recently, and upgraded the courtyard a little bit by adding a couple cylinders underneath the patio blocks, underneath the picnic tables, stained the picnic tables, just to kind of dress it up a little, so hopefully we're going to be working out on a project pretty soon, we hope, with a vocational school, which I'll talk about in a little future, in the future. Other than that, we had a couple pumps over the winter that needed to get replaced. We had one freeze-up in one of the UNIVENTS, and if you remember, last year, we replaced all the... Excuse me. We replaced all the UNIVENT valves along with... Bless you. Along with the controls to bring in more fresh air. So, the nice thing about that is the valves actually worked, because unfortunately, we had a failure. The coil actually froze. We were able to valve it off, and because we have the heat pumps in there now as our secondary source of heat, it pretty much ran the remaining of the winter with no disruption. Nobody even knew that the coil for the UNIVENT was actually broken. So, we're very fortunate. We had it repaired, obviously, during the break when there's no students in the classroom. So, no disruption. No one even knew it even happened. So, that's pretty good. It's a nice system that we have here in place. Other than that, at the intermediate school, again, curb appeal, pretty much in good shape. Middle school? Middle school, we haven't done a curb appeal yet, but we got until Friday. So, I can't speak about that, but I'm happy to report that I can honestly say our middle school is complete. We've spent a lot of time on it, so... A lot of things that were done behind the scenes, I really got to credit Dr. Benau, Mackenzie, our whole project team. We ended up having weekly conference calls to get these little problems corrected before they became larger problems in the future. So, it's... I'm proud to say we had a beautiful building. At our high school, high school, what we've done, we never had... We didn't have any real major problems at all this past winter. We did upgrade our third burner. If you remember, we talked about the green energy grant, where we replaced two burners. They weren't going to fund the third one, so we actually funded it on our own through our operating budget. Important thing about that is that those burners that we have are now obsolete, even though our building's only 12 years old. They're called Gordon Pilot Gas Burners, and so we replaced them with more energy-efficient called AutoFlame. And the best way for me to describe the AutoFlame is kind of like cruise control in your car. So, picture cruise control in your car, and picture not having it. So, what I mean by that is, as you're reaching your set point, the throttle actually backs off, so you're not giving it full throttle all the time. So, it gives you a more energy-efficient system, rather than have it race up to, say, 180 degrees and then shut off. As you get close to the set point, what happens is the gas valve actually shuts down, and it just... It modulates. So, more energy-efficient. And that was actually our summer boiler, and our summer boiler, and actually our fall boiler. So, believe it or not, it gets used quite a bit. So, I'm real surprised that they didn't put that into the grant, but regardless, we got it done now. Also, the... If you guys... I'm sure these guys know the pillars that are up front were kind of falling over, kind of seen its age, although they're 12 years old. They also... We also get an awful lot of salt in the wintertime, so it just kind of eats away at the concrete. So, over the years, we actually tried repairing it on our own with a cast iron rim around the bottom, but the fear is these things were tipping over. So, through our parking lot fund, we replaced them all. We put in our planters, and so we're excited to put some plantings in there. And we also, through the parking lot fund, we also replaced, repaired all the curbing that around the building that were damaged by... We'll just call it damaged by the winters over the years. And then, as we're doing the pillars, as we're doing the planters, we're realizing that our two pillars that we have in front of our building are starting to pop. What I mean by popping is the concrete bricks that were up there, where water was getting behind them, and water in winter really doesn't mix, because it freezes, and you get the expansion, you get the contraction. So, what ended up happening was those bricks up top start to crumble and start to fall off. So, we thought that would be a great project for Bay Path, and I think, I don't know what school committee meeting that we had at the high school, we walked out with Mr. Scobie and presented that little project to them, and Dr. Benau sent a letter out to Bay Path, and next thing you know, we've got a crew of masons. They did a phenomenal job. You know, they took them two weeks, pretty much exactly what they said it was going to take them, and they did a good job. A great job that they can be proud of. And speaking to the, not only Mr. Scobie, but Mr. Brain, I made a great point. He says, "You know what? These kids will be driving by here in 10, 15 years, and they'll be showing their kids. They'll be saying, 'Hey, look, I did that.'" So, it was a great accomplishment, I thought, and we look forward to... Bay Path did this project here, so we're hoping to use them quite a bit. Which leads me to the intermediate school, but we could talk about that later.
Let's do it later.
Also, which brings me to our final thing, our baseball field. Baseball field, we're doing the final punch list now. If you know... If you remember, last year, we put it out to bid. Company from Maine won it. Did an awful lot of work. Didn't meet our criteria, so we had pretty big punch lists. They were true to their word. They came back and did the repairs. Now, keep in mind, this is the baseball field, right? So, I got a little bit of pressure behind me, because we got... The previous coach has two state championships under his belt. The athletic director has two state championships under his belt. Also, I've been one more than before, I think in 98, under Paul Fenton. So, there's a little bit of pressure there. But also, most importantly, this project wasn't done strictly for baseball. It was done to turn the baseball field into a multipurpose field. We have to take some relief off of our football field, and so I don't want people to think that it's all about baseball. But this is done to turn that field into a multipurpose field, so Unified Sports can use it, soccer can use it, lacrosse can use it. I went by there last night. You had Pony League, these kids that run around out there. It's all turf, so it's something that can be used right up into the snow. So, we're very fortunate. But most importantly, it's done to for safety, because we had the infield mix in there. Infield mix, water, turf really don't mix. What happens is, we were told since day one, you get about a six-inch migration of that dirt pushing into the turf, right? And the Paksipatton DPW have done a great job, and the baseball team, after the games, pushing that dirt back onto the dirt. Dirt back onto the dirt. Because what happens is, if you don't, it turns to like concrete, right? It just... You can rake it out, push it out, but it still turns to like concrete. And if we don't... Six inches per year. That's what I mean by it migrates out. So, we would have quite a big area of, pretty much, it turns to concrete. So, now picture your first baseman tripping over the bag, going backwards, leans on his head. You know, he's got no helmet on. He's got a concussion coming, and that can happen. And because this is now a man-made field, reliable. So, you have to do Gmax tests, and you have to constantly maintain your field. So, there's an awful lot that you have to do, and cut it out and put new turf in. So, that's why the decision was, is let's turf the whole thing. So, that's what we did, and we should be pretty safe for quite a few years. And again, it's not all about baseball. Well, I love baseball. It's not all about baseball. It's about turning, taking the relief off of the football field to extending that life. So, that's about it as far as insides and outsides. Also, district-wide, what we've done is we've upgraded our key system for our exterior of our building, and all of our buildings, strictly for a safety measure. What I mean by that is, at our police station, they'll have multiple keys, and even though each police officer has a key fob that gets us into all of our buildings, this will allow, regardless who comes into our buildings, if it's from the police station, they have access, and one key will service every single door. So, picture under extreme circumstance, here at the intermediate school, even the back of the door, you have two doors. You go and put your key in, well, it doesn't work, because it only does the front door, or it only does one of the doors. So, we thought it was important to do every single door, regardless whether it was right next to each other, but this way here, everyone has complete access to every door. So, that was pretty important. Also, what we've done, we cannot solve the common cold, but we can certainly do the best we can to disinfect our buildings and try to curb the germs to some degree. So, what we did, in each of our buildings, we purchased a electrostatic sprayer. And what that does is, it will give like an electrostatic spray, and what it does, it will disinfect the tabletop, any surface areas, bleaches, desktops, chairs, railings. This product actually lasts about 28 days, and then we spray it again. So, we've got those for each one of our buildings, along with a couple backpacks for our buildings that have the bleachers in it. So, that's about it. We've been extremely busy, and we're excited for the year to end to start our summer cleaning and start it all over again.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Fahey?
I have a question. The sprayer, would you only use that like when there's flu outbreaks, or is that going to be a routine thing?
It's a routine thing.
Oh.
So, we try to do it... The product lasts for about 28 days, so we try to keep that on a schedule.
Oh. Very good.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Fahey?
Just a question through the chair. The middle school, there's on the front, there's some streaking happening. Is there a plan for that, or do we know?
That actually, the streak in the white stuff on the brick?
Yeah, yeah.
That actually... Well, we have a mason teacher that can probably speak to it. He'll probably correct me if I'm wrong. That's actually the lime in there drying out, and it's... I don't know if it will ever go away, but it's of no... It's of no harm to the building. We went through this. This was a big concern when the building first opened, that it was... The whole thing was sprayed white, and then it seems to get a little bit better as the time goes on, but it's still up there. But what we're told that there's no effect to this.
You can wash it, and you can get it to clean up pretty well, but the same thing could happen again when we get a big, heavy rain, and we get a couple of days of rain, and the water soaks in behind us. That's to wash out the lime and the salt, and it'll come back out to the face again. So, there's no stopping it. There's no preventing it, but you could, I guess, if it became too much and it didn't go away, you could go up there and give it a good washing, which would be very entailed to do that. So, I would say just keep an eye on it, and if it gets any worse, or if the whole building gets covered, then maybe we need to address it. But certainly, it doesn't look great, but it's going to come back if you wash it.
I guess as long as it's not affecting the structure.
It was a big concern, because we did bring it to Fontaine, actually, a couple different occasions, and we got the same answer that comes back to us, that it's of no concern.
Okay. Just curious.
No, it's a legitimate concern.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Fahey?
Thanks for all that you do.
Thank you. Again, it couldn't be done without all of your support, and also my custodial staff. They're phenomenal. Now, keep in mind, too, that these are custodians. They're not a maintenance team. And the things that these guys do, they go above and beyond, because the whole thing is, is they want to save money. They want to put the money back into the schools. It's an honor to work with some of these guys. The commitment that they have is... It's pretty remarkable. It's contagious, I think. And you know what? It's a reflection on what we want to do, on our mission, right? Kids first. They see that, and it's, like I said, it's a nice feeling. It really is.
I'd just say, have an opportunity to work with Mr. Fahey a little bit, as he said, on those brick columns up front, and I get to work with some of the custodial staff, as well as some of the other support staff, cafeteria people, and again, it's a true team effort. Everyone just seems like their heart is really into it. So, it kind of makes it worthwhile to do what we're doing, because I believe everyone on this board is as committed as the staff. So, it's really, it's a team effort. And thank you, Mr. Fahey. Thanks for explaining a lot of things that happened around the high school site, as well as the other schools. And you gave me some insight every day that I was with you, and then today to get the full report, and the committee could enjoy it. Now, we thank you for what you're doing. Please, it's a great opportunity for me or us to say thank your staff for us, because we don't get to see them all the time. But when I do see them, again, there's always a smile on their face. If I'm there for baseball or basketball, whatever we're doing on some of those sites, everyone's happy to be there. So, it's just, it's truly, it's a good feeling.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can just, through the chair, I know Mr. Fahey is quick to give others credit on his team, and he's a great leader of his team, but, you know, the middle school project and all the projects that he has talked about, Joe's constantly on the lookout for things that we can do to improve, so huge appreciation to Mr. Fahey.
Thank you.
Through the chair, one more comment. You're not going anywhere. I have the pleasure of seeing a lot of these Janners day-to-day, especially over at Pack when I'm volunteering. They just think you're amazing, so they truly respect you, and you do a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good night. Thank you. Thank you. Good night to you. All right. Moving along.
So, just wanted to update you. Worcester County Superintendent's Association, I've been a member since my tenure started, 10 years ago, so I will serve as their president next year, and served as vice president this year, so just wanted you to be aware of that.
Congratulations.
Thanks. And I was actually at the meeting that I was nominated, because sometimes someone who isn't there is nominated, but so I'm happy to serve. Very excited to share with you that we have hired a new assistant principal at this sponsored road intermediate school. After a long search, Dr. Lopez assembled a team, included Dr. Lozé, other central office staff, teachers, and parents. So, went through a great process, and happy to report that Marie Mahan, who is currently our math coach and has been in district for a very long time, has been hired to serve in that capacity. So, she is thrilled. Dr. Lozé is thrilled. Excuse me. She is thrilled, too. Dr. Lozé is also thrilled, and think that they're going to be a great team. So, really excited, and she just announced that to her staff just a couple of days ago, so I'm sure notification will be going out to parents as well, so...
And aunties.
Exactly.
Marie's my niece.
Nice surprise. Yes.
Now, will she be coming in to meet us?
She will, at some point. So, we would just... What I thought we'd do, perhaps, maybe on June 6th, because I know Mr. Desto hasn't come in to meet you yet. I've announced that as well, but hopefully, we can coordinate with both of them on the 6th, so...
That would be great. Any comments, questions? Gail?
No, I just... Marie's a go-getter, and her father has just died in February. I wish she was around to see this. He would have been so proud. But I'm not surprised.
Excellent.
Yeah.
That's great.
She's terrific.
Through the chair, I just have a question about the congratulations, but look forward to meeting her. But then for backfilling the position, do we already have some candidates lined up, just because it is internal?
So... Because it is what? Internal, did you say?
Internal, oh, internal, an internal hire. Right, right, right.
Sure. So, what we're actually doing is assessing how we're going to use it. So, that's actually a position that's been almost exclusively grant-funded.
Oh, okay.
So, we're having discussions around what makes sense to do that. So, still undetermined at this point, I would say.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Happy to report, I know it's been a long process, but the Estevad Valley Collaborative Agreement has been amended, and it's in your packet, and we would need a vote from you. As you know, we started the process to become a member district. It now is completely official with this agreement, so it is my recommendation that you approve.
I would entertain that motion.
I make a motion to accept the amended agreement of the Estevad Valley Collaborative.
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote.
Just a quick question. Mary Ellen, were you the one that was representing us there?
Yes.
Yeah.
I do.
You still do?
I do. Yes.
Okay. Because I was reading through it, and it said someone from the district had to be on their board, and I was trying to remember who it was.
It is me. So, I serve on the Southern Worcester County Board as well, and then the ABC Board. Yes. So, the next item, want to share with you a reconfiguration of our special education staff. It is a financial neutral change. In fact, we're going to be using some grant funds. So, through our Director of Pupil Services, we had a consultant come in and review our special education programming. special education programming. And as you know, we have a strong commitment in the district to provide services to our students in district whenever we can appropriately do so. Obviously, we want students to be safe and also to be able to educate them. So particularly in some of our substantially separate classes, some of our most special students, the consultants came in and really encouraged us, as does Desi, to move away from a model where it is always one-to-one, to really try to promote more independence with children. So this has all been done with IEPs and parental improvement and, and safety is obviously still the top priority. So with this shift, what we would like to do is we'll be eliminating approximately four, I believe right now, support staff members, but in, in turn we bring on two professional staff members. So it will allow us at our, at Bryn Mawr School and at the high school to bring on another professional staff member, separate the number of kids, which are getting larger because we're doing a good job of keeping kids in, separate them so it's a smaller teacher-to-student ratio, still have support staff in there. We believe educationally it makes great sense to do this. We've had long conversations, Dr. Lozay, Mrs. Reedy, principals have been involved in this as well. They're all very much in favor. And it really is in response to the consultant having come in and Desi's guidance around this, to really shift away from this. So I would seek your support to do that. What it would entail would be having meetings to notify the individuals who would be impacted by this, would need to post for special education teaching positions. And ideally, you know, I mean, if I look back over the past few years, each year, some of our support staff get jobs as, as full-time teachers in other districts or sometimes their circumstances change and they move. It would be nice if in the end, no one is negatively impacted and some people leave, but there is the chance that there could be a couple. I will say we, you know, our goal will be to meet with them and we want to do it soon, this week, because this is prime hiring season in the education world that, you know, if, for them to be aware, for them to be looking for other opportunities with the understanding that if something comes open, we'll let them know and we'd, we'd welcome them back. So I seek your support of doing that so we can get those that work in motion to notify the individuals. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the hiring of two special education teachers in 2018-2019 school year in lieu of several support staff positions utilizing both grant and operating funds.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a vote.
Thank you very much. And then the SBC School Building Committee update. We had a meeting most recently on May 3rd. It was our last official one prior to when we'll come back in the fall after the audit. So we are working with MSBA now, now that all of the issues have been resolved and to Mr. Fahy's point, he really has been leading the effort. There's been a team of us, but certainly with him in the lead in making sure that all of the minor issues over at the middle school were resolved. It was our, you know, commitment not only to the taxpayers and townspeople in Auburn, but to the students that we have there now and in the future, that we didn't want to sign off on this until everything was completely working as we believed it should be. When I say we, I really mean Mr. Fahy. I don't pretend to have knowledge about all of the systems there. So we're really satisfied at this point that everything is in great shape. And we will have another meeting in the fall. Our goal is to have the project completely audited and ready to go for board approval, hopefully at the August meeting. That's what we're shooting for. We had a conference call with MSBA today. And then at some point in the fall, the SBC needs to come back for one final meeting to close it out. So I've written notes of thanks to each of the SBC members for their huge commitment of time over the years. And it really has been, as Mr. Fahy said, a, a great project and something in which I think we all have an immense amount of pride, so.
Any comments or questions?
I just thank them for all their hours of giving us their time and expertise. It's just awesome.
It is.
And for free.
And it's a large group of them and they're knowledgeable and I, I watch some of the, some of the meetings and we've got some construction guys on there.
Yeah.
And we've, and from different phases of construction. So it's really, it's nice to have and whenever people donate of their time like that, it's, it's amazing.
I mean, they could go out and do this for a lot of money and they gave it, gave their time and expertise to have them for free, so that's just awesome.
And in the end, like Joe said, we have a great building, so thank you. And Dr. Bernal, thank you for all the hours that you put, put in on that committee as well.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business.
So I'm pleased to share with you and thank Dr. Lozay and Mrs. Worzbickie for working together with me and the AEA, just as we've reported about our school nurses as well as our ABAs that we completed negotiations with. So too, excuse me, the, the school, school nurses and ABAs, yes, okay. So too did the AEA come to the table, really with the desire to work and, and to really get this solved as quickly as possible. So we, they did agree on a contract of a one and a half percent increase in year one, a 2% increase in year two, and a one and a half percent increase in year three. We did add a step in the final year of the contract and some minor language changes, but I think it is a mutually beneficial contract for both the district, the school committee, and certainly for the AEA. And keeps us in good comparison for when, particularly when new teachers are first coming, you know, in those first few years, those difference of $1,000 or $2,000 could be a huge difference for them. So it is my recommendation that you approve that. The AEA has signed on in complete agreement with it.
Great. I would entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the contract for the AEA for the school years 2018, 2019, 2019 to 2020, and 2020 to 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Mary Ellen, for working on that.
Yeah, thank you for getting that done and, and thank you to our teachers for their willingness to bargain in good faith. As always, it's never easy going to the table and it's a, it's a give and take and I think on both sides this time, got it done in fairly, at a fairly good, fairly good pace. Thanks to everyone all the way around and it didn't sound like there were a lot, a lot of fireworks either, so.
Nope.
We like that as well. So thank you to our teachers for all they do and thank you for the good faith bargaining.
And all in favor.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
Thank you, Dr. Lozay.
Yeah.
And then just a, a reminder, this is the final school committee meeting before the June 1st deadline. As of just last Thursday, we had 602 applications. I did put out a one call last week. I have another one planned to go out tomorrow and voicemail. And it has gone out numerous email communications and in hard copy. So we expect probably close to 1,400 if we get them. So we're going to be very busy over the next few weeks in accepting bus applications, so.
You think you have almost another 800 to come in?
I would say that's about what I'm expecting.
Oh, my Lord.
Yes.
I would be one of those 800.
That'll be two.
I'm glad I'm not the only one.
Oh, my goodness.
But I will make the deadline because I'm not paying the fee.
I'll make the deadline, too.
Okay.
Whoa, your office staff is going to be busy.
Anyone else at this table wanting to admit it?
Don't you? Oh, my gosh. We're so bad.
All right. Moving on to new business.
I could volunteer to help the office with them since I don't have any kids.
So just a reminder, as someone announced earlier tonight, it was Isabella, I suppose, in her announcement. So Friday, June 8th is the high school graduation. Invitations will be forthcoming. It starts at 6:30. We look forward to hopefully having you there. And then eighth grade graduation is scheduled for June 13th. And again, invitations will be forthcoming on that, so just reminders.
Question, they're moving the eighth grade back to the high school, I suppose? Because last year, wasn't it at the middle school?
It was at Auburn Middle School last year.
Yeah. It was in the auditorium, you know, the auditorium.
Yeah, it was. It was in the, in the gymnasium and it worked well. So I want to say I'd have to check and see. Yeah, I don't know.
I thought that worked well.
Yeah, it says here at Auburn High School, that, that could be our area. I'm not sure, so, so I will let you know that.
Okay.
We'll find that out.
All right.
Through the chair, is that a daytime event?
It is. It is during the day, yes. And then the upcoming events at Swanson, there are lots of things, obviously lots of concerts taking place, but the Mother Earth Day celebration will take place this Saturday at Swanson. It was hugely successful last year. And then also would point out the Memorial Day programs that are taking place that will soon be advertising to parents to give them fair warning about those. And I know that the schools have as well.
Great, thank you for that. And now moving on to teaching and learning. Dr. Lozay?
Okay, a few updates. As Ryan mentioned, last week on May 10th, we held the annual district festival of the arts STEM and wellness event. This event always highlights the growth of our students all the way from K through 12. As you mentioned, there was a vast array of artwork. There was pottery, there was pen and ink, there was painting. It was just very, very impressive. They had music performances by all the grades, dance presentations that the little kids were just so adorable at, and there were robotics upstairs as well as engineering displays and other STEM displays that eighth grade teachers had brought forth as well as the high school. And it's interesting that this is one of our largest events in terms of how many people attend it. We were lucky to get a parking space. And when we were, and we were just so very impressed with all the talent that our Auburn kids have. So it was a great event.
Kathy, excuse me.
Yep.
They were going to do like a CPR training and did they also get to do that? I didn't get, I didn't make it, but they were going to do that. So that worked out?
Yes, they had done that back in the cardio room, so people were getting trained in that.
Oh, awesome.
So it was great, all around, great event.
Through the chair, can I just say I was thoroughly impressed this year in particular with all the, the dance. They found a very good way to incorporate all of the kids, even in the older grades. It tends to be kind of more structured in the younger grades, but I, I don't know. I, I was thoroughly impressed and had one go to visit the CPR room and I thought that was just the best thing ever, which is good. So thank you for, to over the STEM team as you put that together.
All of those teachers did an awesome job. Once again, Auburn High School, right, can boast of an extensive list of colleges and universities where our seniors have got accepted. That's in your packet as well. And again, it just speaks to how very proud we are of our students, how very capable they are. So kudos to all of those seniors as they move on. Just a quick update, I've spoken to you before about the expert screening, which is, I'll remind you again, survey, brief interview and referral to treatment. And this tool screens for ask at-risk behaviors. We are regulated to administer that to two grade levels through Desi, so we gave it to grade eight and nine this year. And there are interventions offered or provided as needed. And I think as I shared with you at a former meeting that at the middle school, there had maybe been one student that needed to speak with a guidance counselor afterwards and the same was true at the high school. So we found it to be very positive results. People have noted some logistical changes they want to make for next year, but otherwise they felt it went very smoothly. So it was great. I don't know whether you're aware, but I wanted to share with you that all professional staff are required by the Department of Ed to complete two hours of suicide awareness and prevention. That has to occur every three years. So recently on the Half Professional Development Day, teachers were provided time to complete some online trainings through the Jason Foundation, which is a very popular foundation. We also on our March Professional Development Day offered some sessions around suicide awareness and prevention that teachers also took part in, so. Last but not least, it's not on the agenda, but I'm very excited to share that the Science Committee has finally decided to adopt Pearson's Elevate Science for our grades K through five. It has a lot of hands-on inquiry-based learning. It has a lot of digital resources. The teachers are really excited to get started. We'll do some planning this summer and we have PD planned for the upcoming few weeks and then we'll do some more throughout next year. So we'll give you updates as teachers begin to implement it next year, but everybody's really excited about it.
Good.
Great. I just have one question regarding that. Now, when you get together and do the professional development pertaining to that system that, that's being put into place, will everyone continue to do, put together their own curriculum and lesson plans to follow or will you take different parts of it and sort of part it out to, to each of them?
So.
You know what I mean? It's, it's, there's a lot to it. So is everyone going to attack it, take it home and work on what's going to happen in their class or will we?
So what we like to do through the professional development is to give every teacher an overview of the program. And then this summer, they'll come together by grade levels and look through their own grade level and kind of start to pace out the units that they're going to do in the sequence. And in this particular series, you can interchange them, so they'll decide what order to put that in. Now, they may only get the first month or two of planning done, but then we'll give them some more time come the fall and then some more time. So periodically with their PLCs, as they meet with grade levels, they'll be able to plan out further and further and further. And the following summer, after implementing a brand-new program, we always come back together and say, this is what we did, what worked, what didn't work and how can we tweak that? So I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, it does, very well. And, and as far as the assessments go, the, the digital piece, does that tie into the assessments as well? Does it come with tests, quizzes?
It does. And one of the things that the intermediate school teachers really liked is that there was a lot of similarity to the MCAS 2.0. So they were really excited about that and preparing the kids to take that.
Excellent. Well, I look forward to hearing how it goes for the maiden voyage. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, just a question. Who instructed the CPR program at the STEM night? Or who was running?
The arts night? It was the.
Oh, the arts, yeah.
The PE department.
Oh, okay.
They have some trainers there and they were able to do it.
I didn't know if it was the fire department doing it or.
No.
Mr. Gunn.
Oh, really?
Oh.
Okay, we now move on to business and financial.
So in Ms. Worzbickie's absence, she's at the Masbo Conference this week, I share with you a copy of the year-to-date budget reports. I'm happy to answer any questions, but important for you to know, particularly at this time of year, and this includes Dr. Lozay, Mrs. Reedy, Mr. Fahy, Mrs. Worzbickie and I and Mr. Bouvier, we meet on a regular basis to be really monitoring this as we, as we close out the year. Mrs. Worzbickie did, did put together a list of transfers, both within and between series. Again, I, we do this in an effort to keep our lines balanced and we recommend that you approve them as noted.
I would entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfers between the series as presented by Dr. Bernal and the business manager.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
And then finally is the request for omnibus transfer approval from you. This has actually been taking place just about at this time of year for the past several years. And it allows Mrs. Worzbickie and I and other members I've just indicated to really work closely in making these transfers as, as we close them up. We would, assuming you give approval for this, we will bring to you any transfers that are made to keep you apprised, but rather than wait until the meeting on June 6th and then June 20th, we'd be able to make transfers within lines and then notify you after the fact.
Sounds good. I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the granting of omnibus approval to make transfers through the closeout of FY 2018.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote.
Great, thank you.
And we do not need another executive session?
Correct, we do not.
All right. Okay. Good night, everyone. I, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, I'm sorry.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
This is a vote. Good night, everyone.